Operation Heaven Father Lord we thank you. I would thank you Lord for this day. I continue to work with God each and every day Lord as we move forward. Father during the time of the meeting Lord we have to also work over our office and love him Lord and also Lord we need with the city of Chilene. Father he can come together as a unit, let us continue to work together to make this time, make this time of opportunity. He is in all the business in the son of Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. We had a work session before Thursday regarding economic development. Thank you everybody that came in early. I think we made some progress in understanding what we have to offer and the direction we need to go in the future. We're trying on our agenda's approval with agenda items. I know no directions already, changes to it. Have you heard much when we approved the agenda as presented?
Oh, second.
Mr. Wood's second right here. All favor raised your right hand. No, please. So that's clean, thank God. Look at me all. It's just got the motor. There was a man. Both topped his vote.
That's right.
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes and first set are, well folks are from February 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes?
It's the chair, I move that we accept both the work session and the regular council meeting for February 10th. The minutes has written.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay, all favor raised your right hand. You have to say, Mr. Stevens saying he is. Okay, who are we going to open this? Our first item is order 734, which is an ordinance to provide for renewal of the lease of certain property by the county for a solid waste convenience center in Wallace, which is the third reading. Mr. Haynes, I believe this is the convenience center we have.
It's a convenience center in Wallace that they're beside, a part of the property PD Ice and Fuel. We'll continue to operate the convenience center at this site. Do you want to term this later?
Okay. And can motion Mr. Stevens, we have a psychic to renew it, Mr. Allen. Any other discussion? All favor raised your right hand. I think this is something we had in the last three, four years, so this is something that county added service to the people there that we didn't have before, so that's good.
It will proceed too.
Good. We try to, we'd like the folks on that end.
Well, I hope that it saw the municipal dump, that people have some place to take that dump.
They have a dump in that. They have a saw, they have a place. I mean, for the projects.
Okay, moving along to new business. The first item we had is resolution 31501, which is the resolution designated month, April, as the South Carolina Fair Housing Month of 2015. I believe it's in the package. I can read it, I don't know if I should read it. It's the resolution designated month of April as the South Carolina Fair Housing Month of 2014. Where as the county of Marlboro is known that all citizens be afforded the opportunity to obtain decent, safe, and sound living environment, and where as the county of Marlboro rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or familial status in the state of rental and provision of other housing services, and where as the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1988, and where as April was recognized nationally as fair housing law. Now therefore be it resolved, county Marlboro that designated April 2015 as fair housing law. Is there motion we approve this resolution? Second. I don't know, section about words. Any discussion? All favor raised your right hand. Next up is the resolution 31502, a resolution ratifying agreement between the county of Marlboro and Marlboro Electric Co-op about $24,000 in funds for provision of infrastructure. Mr. Haynes?
This is chairman, members of council, the Marlboro Electric actually presented a check to help the county with efforts to change the utility services around the flake water plant that we were talking about a couple times. This is a small project where they're adding on to the end of the building. And as a follow-up to that, this ratification agreement is requested, or presented to council for your consideration, which would allow us to use that money down the road as we need. It's rural infrastructure, I think it is our, amongst the Marlboro that follows, I think, in my mind, it's rural infrastructure. And they made available for us before the end of the year, and we're just now getting the paperwork completed.
Okay, any questions? Are you motion we?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Second. Second about Dr. Preps. Any other discussion? All favor raised your right hand. Actually, also, I don't think I mentioned this council, but I had a bunch of meetings with Marlboro Electric discussing all of, and their willingness to partnership with us, and our willingness to partnership with them. Very positive meetings, look forward to opportunities like this if we move forward. Okay, next is, I think he does, the consideration of approval of workforce development area designation petition, consortium agreement, and designation of grant recipient fiscal agent relating to implementation of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Mr. Haynes?
This is chairman, members of council, the agreement that you have in front of you basically allows for the three things, the forming of a six-county consortium, six counties going together known as the PD region, to operate within workforce development and to obtain funds through workforce development. It also includes a petition to the governor to allow the consortium to be the grant recipient for those WIWA monies, and an agreement designating the PD regional council of government as the actual fiscal agent, the place where those monies would be deposited. So it's again presented with recommendations, with your, with my recommendation for approval for your consideration.
Thank you for your motion, that we accept that recommendation. Second, Dr. Preps, is there a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion? All favor raised your right hand. Next up is consideration of approval of bid in the amount of $39,500 for the design bill for the roof for the DB McCaw house.
This is chairman, members of council, this is the wooden roof building, wooden shingles. And we're trying to, we were trying to come up with a, something that would look the same and, but be, but be different, last longer maybe, and not have a the growth problem of the moss and lichen and whatever else may grow on a wooden roof. And with the help of a local roofer, Mr. Rocker, we've been able to come upon a, what amounts of polyurethane or plastic looking shingle that resembles, in fact, looks like the wood, fake wood or speak, and it's got about thirty, thirty year life on it. He's gone to trouble of designing ways to take to match that wood, and has taken the necessary schooling and gotten the necessary, the necessary education to learn how to actually apply it. So I'm asking for your approval to allow us to move forward with what amounts to a design, a design bill, since he was involved in the very beginning and his local, and we know where he lives, if that works. And you see a proposal in front of you, it's some $39,000 plus. It is not cheap, but it is a good roof that should last, to where some of us would have to worry about it for any time. Eric will have to worry.
Any questions? Are you motion we approve the staff recommendation? Mr. Blackman, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stevens? Any other discussion, questions? All favor raised your right hand. Next up is our renewal of QS1 computer services agreement for fiscal year 2015 to 2016.
This is chairman, this is the overall computer services agreement that we use from, for taxes, for the treasurer's office, through finance, by payroll, and the entire basic system. I don't think it's actually come to the council before, but we got it early enough this year to bring it to council, but as it turns out, it may in fact be early this year as well, as there may still be minor changes in the contract. So I'd really like to change my recommendation for, and ask you to approve it at least in concept, so that we can negotiate a little bit and change things as needed. But this is a budgeted item, it will be within the budget amount that you've allocated in the next year's budget. I pull it from the different departments that are affected, so in the end, it won't go over budget, but it may not exactly match this contract, so I'm asking more or less for your approval in concept for this, this contract we need next week to beat out the rest of the details. I didn't realize it hadn't been totally put in place, but as it turns out, they present and then we, we present back with what we want if we're not satisfied with what we have in the contract, and there's already a few departments who notice some things that they'd like to have that aren't in the contract.
Is there any chance that it will exceed the budget?
No, no, we will not exceed the budget amount.
So would you, are you asking us to prove up to the budget amount?
I would say up to the budget amount, yes. I think we'll be safe, I know we'll be safe from that.
Will the council entertain that motion, approve up to the budget amount?
No motion.
Dr. Preps is second. Now, Mr. Glad, any other discussion? All favor raised your right hand. I believe that's the service we use for, who we get this.
Yes, it's the service we use for you.
All right, next up is something that I know council has a great interest in, and that's a staff's brought for our consideration, a mapping proposal. We discussed it in our work session about finding some efficiencies by combining different mapping programs that we have in different departments, and also having it as a tool for economic development. Mr. Haynes? Is there a?
Mr. Chairman, we, actually, we're in the process of negotiating contracts, as the time we mentioned it at the last, at the last meeting. And what you have in front of you is what we would like to have, we and staff would like to have. There's a, and as I warned you ahead of time, there is, it's a big number, about $700,000 worth of, of mapping, and this includes serving out these maps to the public. And then there's an additional $7,000 a year for some maintenance and for licensing approvals. The, and I, I really want to go into a little detail if you don't mind, and make sure that you understand what, what we may be getting, and it's like any other system, if it's good, it's only as good to the operator, it's only as good as the folks that you train to use for service. And I pulled some maps at the end of the proposal, if you'll flip over to find them, they're in color, so you'll be able to see them, but on, there, there are maps of areas that I happen to have on my computer, my personal computer, and I will tell you that notice today, they're over ten years old, so these are, this is ten-year-old technology. We're getting ten years in the future from these maps, and I'll just show you that the, this is in North Carolina, the Richmond County Industrial Park. The very first number one, map number one, was a park at the street, and we were passing around a bunch of internal maps, looking at the site before we, before we did anything there. You would, we could do topo, you could see the topographic lines in, in this map, you could see the, at that time, I'm not even sure, in fact, I'm almost positive, that Highway 74 didn't exist, the right way was there for that new highway to come through, but it didn't exist, but we knew where it was going to be, you could, you know, all that was built into the system, you could print it off and see what your two pieces of property on each side of the big highway were going to look like. There were different pieces of property owned by different members of families, it turned out, and we were able to shade these in different colors. And, and again, it's what you can ask for, and we were internally trying to decide what we were going to do, and where the road might be, and where, how we might access the one side from the other, and at the time, you could see there was no access on the south side of 74, we didn't know where that might end up. And the road going in on the north side ended up not looking quite like that. But you see, on page two, I'm looking for a date here, we're still in 2004, we began to think about what we might want, want that property to look like, not necessarily in zoning, but just in looking at what it might be. And we do show that some of it was owned by the city of Hamlet, we know that's taken care of. We had some, the county at that time was thinking about designated as, as designating as heavy industrial. And, and by then, it looks like we had either gotten a promise of, or had located a small plant that's still there, P and D, the plantation shutters guy, who operates out of a small plant there on the south side of this industrial park. But again, you can make it look like, make it look like whatever you want it to look like, and it gives you a tool, it gives you a tool as council to sit there and, and look at it. It gave us a tool as, as staff trying to decide what it was we had. And in this case, we weren't interested in topo, so we took, we took the topo lines out and, well, actually made them in the background, in the map, so we weren't distracted by all the topo lines. You can, you can take them out if you want to, you can leave them in the background for looks, but again, we were passing this inside, internally, and taking ideas as to what things may, what things may eventually look like. On the third page that I've included, it's again, just happen to have these in, in my computer, we, we were looking at utility lines, where we were going to build utility lines, where there were already utility lines, and one of the, one of the goals was to try to get sewer on both sides of the intersection, on the far right-hand side of the page, as you look at it, and so you could see we had either made a decision or were ready to make a decision as to how to get that to happen. And you see, the water line came under 74, under the big river, we were able to get, get that, get that on the map and show where the water line was coming from, and anything else you want to see, we can see surrounding properties, whatever, again, whatever we wanted to look at. The next one on page four, looks like we were showing the utility lines again, just a different color, different, maybe a different proposal in some small way, anyway, it, it ended up in a different map. Now, the one I, I found interesting, that I was glad I kind of was able to find, first of all, was, was page five, which is another little industrial park on the west side of Rockingham off of Old 74, and you could see that that park had just been chopped into three or four different pieces, and we've been able to get four little industries in there, and we were trying to figure out how we might use the rest of the property. And we had topo lines on here because it was pretty hilly in, in some areas, in fact, to the point of probably not being developed very much more, I think in the end, no, the Sarah Lee plant is on there. And that's the last plan, I think, still the last plan at the end of that road, because the rest of the property is hilly, and Ron's tried to cover that up a few times even before.
No, I mean, you would turn that off if you're.
You could just turn the topo off if you're trying to get somebody's attention.
You don't want a lot of listeners.
Now, one of the snags we found out with, one of the snags we found out with our system, is it didn't have spell check built into the mapping system, and it used to be just a running joke inside, as to what we could find if the mapping guy had misspelled, but look at Sarah Lee, I, we didn't catch it, even on this late, I just thought the other day, I looked at it and said, Sarah does not spell S-A-R-E. But that's, so, so things will change over, over time, but, but those are the kind of things, little things you run into, that you have to remember to look for. Then again, that's a, that's a, an update of that same smaller industrial park on, on page six, where we were showing what we thought might be we could sell as a large site, because there would be enough, there were enough hills and enough valleys there, we could, with enough bulldozers, you could make it level or close to them. So again, again, most of the people in terms of, we were looking, we were looking inside, between the various offices, showing on the council, with the county commissioners, at, at a particular time, for whatever reason. Now, the next one is, is number seven, is the one I meant, I thought it was coming to a minute ago, map number seven. It's interesting in that I think the query, or the question we asked the system was, show us thousand, a thousand acres minimum by the same owner. And we limited it to a, a certain area of the county, which was south of New 74, and bingo, we get this, or we are, we may ask the question, it's within so many miles of this generating facility, the big red dock there, which is back then Progress Energy, natural gas generate, natural gas power generating facility, because we want to show that, that was something that we, we were trying to convince someone, or whatever, that there, there was power in the area, big power would be available. So we ended up with three sites that came up within, and again, that's a pretty big piece of, piece of the county that we're looking at, but you can make that look as large or as small as you want. Again, it's whatever you ask for, and the information has to be in the, in the machine, in the memory, in the database, to be able to use it, and it doesn't happen overnight, but it's a tool, and it's one of the tools that I think you can, we can use in economic development, you can use in planning, you can use, you know, tell me where the, the building permits have been issued in the past year. If it's in, if you plug the information in, you can, you can get a map, you can get a pop-up map with pin for every location where a building permit's been sold, every location where a building permit, where somebody had one turned down, for whatever the reason, or missed an inspection, where did we not, where did we pick up new building from in the tax office? But it's, it's kind of, the more you build in, the more you can get back out, and it is a slow learning curve, I'll be honest with you, if we called it first, I think we looked at one another thing, what are we going to do with this now that we got it? What can we do? It didn't take long, and, and, and it depends on the personalities of the, of the folks involved, and we began to learn to use it, and people thought they were pretty mapped, and that made us want to make more. Economic development clients love, they might not come, but they, they love the map anyway. We got a lot of compliments on map, but it's the first step, and you get somebody's attention sometimes with, with just a map, and that's, I think it's worthwhile, it's a big investment from the camp of the county, the, the pressure become, begins to be then on me and others to get the information in the system. We started that process with the recent flights that we've taken, the photographs have been made, the aerial photography has been done, it was finished by the end of February. So all those new pictures get folded into this new mapping system, and then we add water lines, sewer lines, topo lines, from, all those come from forestry service and other places, and they're, they exist generally, so you can, you can get that, that information in there, you get your, you get your fire, you can peep your fire hydrants, and, and you can tell somebody whether they're in a relationship to a fire hydrant or a roof, or whatever it is you might be looking for. Again, big investment, and I think it's worthwhile in the end, it's a slow process sometimes to get there, but that'll be my goal, is to, is to get us there as quick as we can. And this gets served out to the public, this is available to you at home on your own, on your personal computer.
With some discount too, with billing and?
Yeah, we got the discount on flights, and this, this is the second step of, of using that information for the project.
Any questions?
I really want to go into deep, so you know what you're getting, or what you, what the potential that you're getting, anyway, I think it's, I think it's invaluable. Oh, I have the money in the current budget to take care of this, because that's, that's another, now that's one of my goals, or one of the questions you asked at the workshop, is the legislature might get the money. At the last minute last budget session, back last June, we decided to at least purchase some of the capital items, so the capital items were budgeted, but we at least purchased them, and we get to spend all the cash, so within our budget, within, within the tax office, and the, and the money's coming possibly from economic development, as well as 911, all these departments will use these maps, I can come up with the money to, to fund this project.
Yeah.
Most of my, Mr. Allen, second about Mr. Allen. Glad, is there any other discussion? Second? All favor raised your right hand. This is a big move towards being progressive, and it's so hard to be progressive when you're broke, but we have to plant the seeds now that will pay off in the future. This is, will save us operating money, create efficiencies, and it really will, I can tell you firsthand, be a huge economic development tool, so thank council for having the confidence of staff to do this, it's a really a big deal, bigger deal than maybe something real. Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you.
That's pretty good trick with the money. All right, moving on, we have appointments for boards of the council, I know there was some information sent out, so some people may have appointments to make, do anyone have anything at this time?
I have one. I want Jack Bridges to talk in recreation.
Okay. I will approve all, once, are there any others? Right now?
Jack Bridges, please.
Okay, there aren't any more, but everyone, including myself, take a look, let's try to fill them, I think there's even some that probably have to, just review. But either the board has somebody on there, says, take a look, next we will clean that up, but right now we have an appointment, an nomination from Mr. Glad for Jack Bridges for the recreation board. Is there a second to that?
I have a second.
Second about Mr. Wood, all favor raised your right hand. Get you now. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving along to our fourth, we have our five support, Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, for the month of January, expanded for 60% of the budget amount that is still slightly under budget for this point in the year, residents for this month increased 14% from January, which brings revenues to 65%, and this is rival target for this point in the year. We're glad to see that increase, we weigh it all. We've begun some preliminary work on the upcoming fiscal year's budget and budget question, and they're sent out to the department heads. There have been more than a local government fund that went to selection, as you may know, some of this already. Last week, the House passed 3374, but the bill was amended to provide that the local government fund will increase by the same percentage as the general fund, but up to 5%. So the maximum growth in the local government fund would be 5%, even if the general fund grows by, say, 15%. And according to the association of killings, it did grow that much in fiscal year 1112 and 1213. But the way the needs committee, it was indicated that this year and next year, there will be an increase in total local government fund funding, but the entire local government fund appropriation will be shifted to be recurring funding. The amendment that would have rewritten 3374 with a three-year phase-in to the current formula has been taken.
Any questions? Max three report, we all keeping up with the local government fund draw, so hopefully we'll come out a little better than we were. Next is Mr. Haynes, administrative report.
Chairman, members of council, Ainsley actually listened to some of the debate, I think on a webcast or something, that the way the needs committee allowed, and she shared with me one of the things that somebody finally said, and it's what you and I have said off and on, as long as I've known you. What does it really matter, because we don't fund the local government fund at the legislative amount now, so, you know, is all this just a waste of our breath and time, or are we really going to try to fund it? And I'm not sure what the answer to that is, I'm throwing rocks at the legislature, but, but it's good, it's better than it could have been, the legislation that is, but, but we'll have to see how it's funded before we really know whether it's a good thing or bad. The following employees are recognized, I had included board members, recognized as five more years of service in Marlboro County through the month of February. Dewan Ballstick, we've got 12 years, Lawrence Brand, 13 years, Ronald Covington, 21 years, Vanessa Dowdy, five years, Anna Frye, 17 years, Ray Howe, 13 years, Barbara Leifert, 11 years, councilwoman Carolyn Prince, 14 years, Kevin Thomas, 26 years, Dolores Barrett, 28 years. And before, and last time it came up as to why they may fall in different months, we, we, the system that we have, the QS1 system, backtracks to when you first signed up, when you first came in to sign up for your check, whether you were, or for your benefits, whatever they might be, whether you came in in December, or whenever, whenever you may come in, Dr. Prince may have came in late, or got assigned in February, I'm not sure, but she's on the list, she is on the list, even though we didn't tell her name, however, but he did it last June. Vicki Harris, Veronica Harris, has been named as the veteran service officer, the veteran affairs officer. We're now taking applications and resumes for the administrative assistance position in that office, which would be obviously per assistant, and would serve in some ways as a phone answering back system for the legislative office that's located in that, in that same area. Again, remember, you have to file the 2015 statement of economic interest if you haven't yet, and need to do that before the end of March. There's a late penalty, filing penalty this year of up to $100. There's a late penalty, filing penalty this year of up to a hundred dollars if you don't file it before March 30th at noon. And again, I think we've submitted the forms, and it don't apply. And it really, once you get started, once you get in and remember your passwords that you used last year, doesn't take long. The county has, just as a point of information, we've needed a piece of property, a one-acre piece of property, back to Donatar that was covered in a FLO that has expired, so it was built into the FLO that the land would be held during the FLO, and then would revert back. So, we have processed that and signed the deed back to them. We didn't break it back to you because it's really not a new transfer of property, it's something that you, that was arranged for during the FLO process itself, it took place twenty or thirty years ago. So, we have executed that agreement, or that document. Attorney Easterling, it brought to our attention a class action lawsuit, which has been brought by the city of Columbia and other local governments against hotel guys and others for an accommodation tax. It seems that through Expedia and some other internet sites, you could either avoid the tax or miss the tax, or whatever the case may be. Possibly, we might be due up to five hundred, five hundred dollars, not enough to spend a whole lot of time on, but we want to follow up just to see, just to see how that might go. As you remember, we've been struggling with what to do with the old library building on, let's see, that'd be Market Street. And we had offered or asked the city if they'd be interested in purchasing, or buying, or having the property, the building and the property, but since it's across the side street from their, from their cut works facility, and we received a letter back that they were not interested, we'll probably move towards getting some, getting some ideas as to what it takes to take the building down. Based on the information that I went back and reviewed, as we were talking to them, our recommendation by two different, two engineers and an architect, it would have to be taken down to the slab to be, before you could do anything. Now, county council is right now scheduled to host a dinner meeting with members of the municipal city council on Monday, March 23rd. That's two weeks from last night, 5:30 till 7:30, at Magnolia on Main. It's an informal meeting. I know things come up, I know you have changes in plan. Let me know beforehand if we need to make a change, or try to, try to make some change in arrangements, dates, times, whatever it may be, just for your convenience. We try to set them up and let you know as early as we can, and if you don't, if you don't get the notifications, and you get crossed up with things, and it does serve as a benefit for us to try to meet. As you know, the library, Mr. Virginia McGraw, has retired, and she's recuperating though from a broken hill that happened just before she retired. And so, she's recuperating, but I think she, as well as Table Clerk Judy McQueen, can be at the next meeting, we will recognize them for their years of service to the county. And we have a couple other recommendations that we're going to bring up at that April meeting as well, for some of our folks and some of the other officers who serve in statewide offices for their organizations. So, we had that called in my attention last week, and we're going to take care of that. And as Ainsley said, the county departments have received their budget forms, and they'll come back to us next Wednesday, and we'll get, we'll have to get on it right away. I have a not very pretty spreadsheet that I've placed in front of you, and there's some words scratched on the side, but it was, I had mentioned it earlier, Dr. Prince mentioned something about school, school districts' taxes. And what I used, I used the South Carolina Association of Counties' numbers to plug in tax rates, mileage rates for both schools and counties, and then sorted it, arranged it by, from low to high, based on schools. Now, I've also got another copy of this thing, sorted by county, by the county amount. Just to see, and the idea, I was sitting in the office yesterday, the day before, just thinking about where we did, where we fell, how far down were we, or how high were we compared to other counties. This kind of begins to answer your question. The factor here that I can't measure right now is the bottom section of the schools says varies by district, and that means that the county has more than one district, and the tax rates may be different in those districts. Some are lower than us, some are higher than us, so it probably would basically equal out, but I haven't come up with a good way to show that in a form just yet, and I may continue to play with it as we work towards the budget. But it's just good information, and I have this information, if you want it, in a clean copy, just in alphabetical order, or however you might want it, I'll give it to you. It's easier to transmit. That concludes my formal presentation, and I'll answer any questions if my desk.
Mr. Hanks, as far as the library, the old library, if you could meet with the committee that has the possibility for other buildings in county.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And revisit that, and maybe time to go ahead and get another bid to do.
Okay.
Can't move it. And we had the last night of the school board, and some people had conflicts on this board and on the school board, but we made it, made sure it was informal and brief, and that seemed to work pretty well, so if we can lead the city towards the same thing, I think we'll have a better attempt to compete, have discussions, and have a presentation, and move on. Anybody have any questions? Thanks for your report, Mr. Hanks. As far as Recreation and Citizens' request to speak before the cap, so Mr. Nick, who's assigned up?
Good chair, boy. Everybody here, I'm not a beginner, basically, but, but this, in a given reputation, you get to these hospitals in the future. We had our first meeting about a week ago, and they were represented by all services from Green, Coops, Lee, Army, Navy, and the airports. And we also had some advice from the county, but the county administrator came, stopped him, and he gave us the wisdom also. So, we're working on this, and we're going to be meeting again in the future. We're thinking about getting a DAB setup in this county, on our own. Marlboro County has their own DAB, but we're working on that also. So, I just wanted to let you know that we're working on this, we'll be getting back to you in the future and give you a progress report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hanks. Okay, keep along with Recreation Council, as far as Mr. Glad, start with me.
Okay, nice, real short. Thank Mr. Wood, Mr. Nick, too, for last week coming to our meeting. Also, Mr. Hanks, met with some of the veterans, gave us some pretty good ideas, different ways to go to see about trying to get a vehicle to take veterans back to hospital, to doctor department. This is something that's going to take it for a while to do, but I just want to thank them, and thank Mr. Hanks again for working with the guys, trying to get something organized to get done. The other thing is which we will look at next month, Mr. Hanks sort of touched, or then, those registration, had a annual conference, which I attended to, and there's a lot of good things coming out of that. And I think next month, Mr. Hanks will have all the information on that, and we'll bring that back to the county here, whatever it takes out of the time.
Okay. Mr. Glad, definitely. Mr. Wood?
Just a quick word, as you know, always talking about local government fund, and sorry that things have turned out the way that they have about that. I think all the counties need to take a stand about how things have turned out, seeing what they want to get rid of on the move. They're trying to give us the road, the efficient way funds, which is voters, excuse me, citizens' tax money, that should come back. And they don't come with mandates. It's been my position for about a year, that if the cost we come from the mandates exceeds the local government fund, then we should find a way to reduce the amount and support these agencies, so that county have money to do the kinds of things that we want to do for our counties. So, I will continue to be your eyes and ears on some of that. Also, thanks for that, we are agreeing with the documents that came from Cal, we got a lot of good work out of Cal. So, they were, in a meeting that happened in Marlboro County, it's gone to bits, so thank you for that.
Mr. B?
Just a thank for council, I think Mr. Hanks fully reported, but I would want to talk to that, for the boys in the public sector, many men, but DMs are as well talking about being a burden to them about, you know, overtraction protection, but we met with them, and they're our family, so no matter what, that should be fine, so that was getting used, giving that council another thought, and it's all right.
I have to say that we, Troy Fallow, suggested in order to that he would be conducting a free clinic in the community, and we would be using the gym for grade six to twelve. We got a gym, and he talked with the Harrington, and they have worked out a tentacle plan to get kids involved all the regular season, not just over with, but kids getting something to do. So, it's up to them to work on their skill, their craft, and, you know, street. It'll be Saturday from nine to twelve, and this goes over well, through the fall of summer, through the fall of summer, there's other camps, and hopefully get a lot of involvement. That Troy Fallow over there, and he will be heading that up this weekend.
Thank you for your efforts there. One thing I had is, I agree with Dr. Prince, that maybe it's part of the budget process is to have a plan if we did want to make a statement and reduce our funding statement that we have. Unfortunately, I think it's going to come to that, and, you know, we have to take a stand and fight. I think everybody feels the same way. I don't have anything else, other than I thank you again for your work on the mapping. Proposal is nice when you have a workshop, and council feels like we should go a certain way, and staff hates that and runs with it. That's a good feeling. I don't think other, other boards and other counties, and maybe this county, have the same response from the staff, unless you... Okay, anybody have anything? If not, I'm going to take a motion, move it to adjourn. Then we'll move to the second, all favor raised right hand.